Good evening. Calling to order the meeting of the Town of Arlington Select Board. It is September 24, 2018, a little bit after 7:15. We're up in the Select Board chambers. And just to introduce everyone, all the way to my right is Selectman John Hurd. Direct to my right is Selectman Joe Kuro. Selectwoman Diane Mahon. Selectman Kevin Greeley. Town Manager Adam Chapdeline is out of town on town business. It's a professional development week for several of the members of town staff. And our acting town manager is also our Town Council Doug Heim and Board Administrator Marie Kropelka. So I often like to start the evening with a quote, generally try to make it something topical. Tonight's quote, I want to recognize the Red Sox and their season as they have tied the record for the most wins ever for the Red Sox. And they're going to try to set a new record for that tonight. And I've really been enjoying watching them, the funny names they have in all.
Funny names, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, they have funny names. They have nicknames. Now, on the Red Sox team, we have who's on first, what's on second, I don't know who's on third.
Well, that's what I want to find out. Tell me the names of the players on the Red Sox team.
I'm telling you, Kevin, who's on first, what's on second, I don't know who's on third.
Do you know the names of these players?
Yes.
Well, then who's playing first?
Yes.
No, I mean the fellow's name on first.
Who?
The fellow playing first base.
Who?
The guy on first base.
Who is on first?
Well, what are you asking me for?
I'm not asking you, I'm telling you, who is on first?
I'm asking you who was on first.
That's the man's name.
That's who's name.
Yes.
Very good.
So, a tribute to Albert Costello and the Red Sox. Didn't see that one coming, did you?
No.
I did, because I read your papers beforehand. I'm like, what are these two nuts doing?
Some of them out there picked it up pretty quick. Nicknames, yeah.
Definitely. All right, first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. We've got minutes of meetings, and there were just a handful of corrections on them. So if you, so for instance, under item 10, we talked about how we moved to postpone that one. On item 13, the comment was rewritten to talk a little bit more, it says, presented to the Select Board with a petition signed by 700 people who are concerned with parking changes, because I think the original language is ambiguous about what the petition change was. And for National Grid, we said, oh, sorry, National Grid 15, that was a four to one vote, and we had to get that in there. So Consent Agenda is minutes of meetings, Class 1 license revision, addition of the Genesis brand at Mirac, so they're going to be Chevrolet, Hyundai, Genesis. We have a three-day special one-day beer and wine license for Satan of Stages, the great Orthodox Church for Opa Cuzina. And is anyone here to speak on any of those items?
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone who wants to talk on any of those Consent Agenda items? All right, all those in favor of, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Five zero. So we have a series of appointments, and I've got notes here for a set of people who are both going to be here and late. So I, with the Board's indulgence, I think I've got recommendations for some of these, and some of these I think we're going to be bringing back up, kind of out as people, you know, stop in late. So first up, we have Community Preservation Committee. And we have Clarissa Rowe is here, and Charlie McCabe is, cannot be here for, because he's out for town business. That's a, you know, obviously a very big committee, and I don't think many people on the Board have met before him before, so I'm inclined to hold that one. Doug, do you want me to go through the process on how this went since, or do you want, were you planning on doing the appointment? Okay. I was actually on it. Sorry, Kevin?
I am proud and pleased to nominate, or to move approval for Clarissa Rowe.
Second.
And I move table Charlie McCabe, is that the correct table?
Yes.
I move table Charlie McCabe.
So Clarissa, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the process. So we advertised for the position, and we had six applicants come in. And I tell you, like, I have, of all of the sets of applications that I have looked at while I was Selectman, this one was the most impressive field. Like, it brought out really qualified people. And so we actually did interviews with all six, because, I mean, they were all for real, but a couple of them nosed their way ahead, and one of them, obviously, was Clarissa. So Clarissa, you've, why don't you tell us why you?
Thank you so much for having me back. I have been involved with the Community Preservation Act since its beginning, and have been until two weeks ago the Chair of the Statewide Coalition. I just stepped down after 16 years, which is a little too long, really. And I love being on the Arlington CPA Committee, because I think a lot of the projects that are happening are terrific for Arlington. And they're ones that we haven't had the funding to do in the past, and so Historic Graveyards and New Playground at Hardy, things that are really community needs. And so I love being on the Committee, and I do hope that you will reappoint me, or appoint me, whatever I'm being.
Appoint.
All right, so we've got a motion for Mr. Greeley. Is there a further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. With pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clarissa. Thank you for volunteering. Next up, we have Council on Aging. We have Ann K. Brown, Nancy Cox, Mary Hung, and Michael Quinn. Michael Quinn is going to be, he's going to be in late because he's off, I guess, at Parents Night. We have seen Michael before, and so I'm inclined to say, let's approve him and ask him to just come in and say hi with the Boards. Could, Ann, Nancy, and Mary, could you come on up to the microphone? And why don't you, one at a time, please introduce yourself and tell us why you've applied for this Committee, like, what you think, what you think you can bring, or, you know, tell us what motivates you for this volunteer position.
Sure. My name is Mary Hung. I've been an Arlington resident for almost 40, 44 years. All my kids grew up here. They graduated from Brackett and went on to, went to high school and college. And I retired about two years ago from the Postal Service after 31 years of service. And I felt that the retirement was a little bit boring, and so I thought that, when I saw the ad in the Advocate about this position, I thought that as a senior citizen, from my perspective, how I can contribute to my town. So, you know, when my kids were growing up, I was running around getting them into programs by the Arlington Recreation or what have you. So I really never had a chance to basically give myself a chance to see what the senior citizens in this particular town has to offer, as well as to my perspective of how to be a senior citizen in a town of Arlington. And I thought that being a Board Member may help me, either give a little bit of my perspective and also receive some.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Ann Brown. I have been living in Arlington for the past 11 years. My husband and I bought a house down on Decatur Street 10 years ago. I've been thinking about being involved, and finally, when, same thing, I saw the ad in the Arlington Advocate, I kind of said, ooh, that looks interesting, put it aside, and it kept calling to me, and I said, I'm going to send my resume in and see what happens. And then when I met with Susan and Christina and Jim, it was just, I was so excited by what was going on already in town. I was excited about the age-friendly commitment that the town has made, and I really just would like to be a part of all the wonderful things that are happening here, and I hope that you all approve me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Nancy Cox. I have lived in Arlington for 42 years. I brought up my family here, went to Arlington schools, and I've worked as a registered nurse for 48 years. I retired last year and was a little bit worried about what I was going to do. When those days came to an end, and I became somewhat familiar with the Senior Center, I did some volunteering for Meals on Wheels, and I applied to do the Shine Program, but I got called for federal court, and I was on a grand jury for a while, so I sort of missed out on that. But I did see the ad in the paper, and I worked as a nurse case manager at Spalding Rehab, both Cambridge and Boston. And then I worked for 16 years at Cambridge Health Alliance, which is a public health hospital. One of the things I really loved doing was working with the elderly and helping patients and families learn about resources available to them, and some that they didn't know anything about. I had a particular fondness for hospice. I covered both ICU, emergency room, and cardiac, so I got to know a lot of the families in my community, and I really feel a special fondness for seniors, especially now that I am one. So I thought this might be a nice way to give back for everything I've sort of gotten, so that's who I am.
Thank you. Joe?
I'd like to move approval of all four of the appointments before us for Council on Aging.
Second.
Second to Mr. Hurd. Joe?
Yeah, I, for the, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the last two years, I've had the honor of serving as the liaison of the Board to the Council on Aging, and, you know, we've lost some, you know, great Board members who have stepped down, and I know there was concern about where are we going to find great people to fill their shoes, and so I'm so thankful that you've stepped forward, because I think that you bring a great balance of experience amongst you between your legal experience, your healthcare experience, your linguistic experience. Really helps to address some of the issues that are discussed on a, you know, regular basis at the COA, as we strive to serve all of our seniors and make sure they're aware of the services that are available to them, too. So thank you all for stepping up, and I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, approved them all. Thank you. Next up, Recreational Marijuana Facilities and Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers Study Group, terms to expire June of 2021. Sarah O'Good, Paul Chek, Joseph Mowen. Who do we got? Welcome, welcome. Why don't you come on up and introduce yourself, and tell us about your interest. Come on up just a little to the microphone, because, as we say, the millions at home can hear you.
Okay. So I'm Sarah O'Good. I'm obviously not quite a native to Arlington, although I have lived here for 15 years. I've raised my family here. I currently have two teenagers who are in the Arlington Public School System. I have a background in molecular neuroscience, a PhD, and I currently work in the field of environmental health and safety in terms of regulatory compliance, so I'm very familiar with regulations. Given my background in molecular neuroscience, which very much focused on dopamine and the reward system, I felt that now's a great opportunity to be able to get involved in the marijuana study group, have a deep understanding, and obviously an interest having two teenage children. So it's an opportunity to give back.
Thank you. Questions before we bring up number two? All right. Who do we have? Do we have Paul or Joseph here?
Paul, Mr. Chek is here.
Oh, that's, oh, sorry, Paul, Mr. Chek is here, and I'm sorry, I've got a note that Mr. Mowen will be here late around 7:30 or 8:00. I apologize. Welcome.
The Board, my name is Paul Chek. The Board approved me as a member of the Disability Commission some about nine months ago, so I just want to remind the Board that I have a hearing disability. So I'm holding this microphone and attempt to try to get sound in here, and it's very difficult for me. One-to-one works very well, but large groups do not. My interest in the, in the Commission, or in the study group, is, comes from my professional work. I am a member of a group called the Association of Cannabis Specialists, which is an association of medical professionals mostly, that are, that have a mission of educating the patients about the proper use of medical marijuana. I'm a resident of Arlington, and frankly, I just want to see this brought into the community correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Motion? Mr. Greeley?
So move approval for Sarah and Paul and Joseph at this point, would you like, and then?
Yeah, and I think, I expect Joseph will be in shortly, so, yeah, so we've got a move.
Yeah, and, you know, I've been Arlington, in Arlington, most of my 67 years, 30 years on this Board, and I am, I continue to be so impressed with the volunteers that step up, that are truly the lifeblood of this town.
All right, so we've got a motion by Kevin, a second by Joe over here. Is, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you. All right, next, we have request for Punjab Restaurant Late Night Event, Josbal Pabla. Thank you. Mr. Leone?
Hi, John Leone here with Josbal Pabla. Looking for just one night late night event on Halloween, they're going to have an extra few hours, and just seeking your approval. They've had one in the past on a New Year's Eve about four years ago, and that went without a hitch.
Joe?
Only question, when will last call be?
I'm sorry?
Last call?
Last call.
Probably around, what is the time we were asking for, 1:00?
1:00, yeah.
Probably around 12:45s.
Okay, thank you.
Same query, but with regard to food.
Oh, it'll be, they'll follow the two drink without requirement.
Thank you.
Require food.
Move approval?
Second.
Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Greeley. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is Citizens Open Forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the Board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established, and there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. So Marie's checking our sign-up sheet. Do we have someone there?
Sharon Shalo.
Sharon. Welcome, Sharon.
Thanks. I always love the opportunity to say my name is Shalo. Looks like Shalou, but it's not.
Thank you.
So hello, my name's Sharon Shalo. I'm a 29-year resident of Arlington. I've lived here longer than I've lived anywhere else in my life, first on Newport Street and now on Ravine Street. I'm not, I'm not happy to be here, and I'm, so I'm a little nervous, but I want to try to keep this collaborative. I wanted to say in the beginning, I love the Marx Brothers. I appreciated that. I also love when anybody takes something that's been written as either an icebreaker or a guideline. In my day job, I direct our Commonwealth Center for the Book. It's an affiliate of the Library of Congress, and our fundamental position is that books change lives. My quote-so is not as happy. I take it from Edmund Burke, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." So I'm here to make a public complaint. I tried to make a private complaint directly to our town manager. That didn't work. So now I'm going public about serious police mistakes that caused real harm in my family, and to complain about the town manager's refusal to question the police in face of a very credible narrative that we presented to him. The "we" being me and my future daughter-in-law, Lika Myblum. I want to further complain about the town's continued use of John Guilfoyle Public Relations, the firm that helped to virally disseminate the claptrap that has defamed Lika and caused her continuing harm, even to the point of last week having her new landlord call her to ask her to explain why this screed was out on the internet. I want to understand the process by which we can create a community review board so that there is a place to bring grievances, have them aired, and get them rectified. And I also want to talk with you about creating a position of ombuds person in Arlington so that there is someone in the employ of the town whose stated role is to be impartial. So I thought about starting tonight just by jumping right in, starting to read from a narrative, but I thought that I would do that overview to say that something really bad happened here. It started in March of 2016. There have been layers upon layers of mistakes compounded in it, and I don't see the town doing anything to fix it. So I'm here getting ready to fix it, and I intend to come back every two weeks and use three minutes at the Citizens Open Forum to read a few more paragraphs of my narrative, if that's what it takes. But I'd like to think that we could do better. I believe very much in the cause of restorative justice, but that only works if we have a corollary principle of accountable policing. And that is my concern, and I understand you won't act on it, but I certainly hope that somebody will email s__shalo@msn.com and invite me out for a cup of coffee, never at Kickstand Cafe, but I'm happy to go to Cafe Nero or to Starbucks, and talk with you about it and get this moving again, because this is not right, and it's not right for people to say they've done all they could, and we know who we're talking about here, or to send private thoughts and prayers and compassion, but then tell us that it would be so bad for Lika to stir this all up by making it public. So that's my say. Email me.
I, well, I'm calling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who's here for Citizens Open Forum? Sorry, who do we have?
Jeff Frost.
I was, I was here for the National Grid.
Okay, so we'll, we'll cut, we'll get to that under the addendum when we get there. Is there anyone else who's here for Citizens Open Forum? All right, seeing none. Citizens Open Forum is closed. Next up, for approval, artwork along Mass Ave Corridor, Cecily Miller. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. You have a sort of a full overview. I'm not going to run through the whole thing, but I wanted to just set a little context that when the town first started planning its BRT pilot project, we saw an opportunity to use public art to raise awareness about the project, to landmark bus shelters, to give bus riders, you know, kind of a more interesting experience for a month or two while the pilot's running, and kind of activate the Mass Ave Corridor. So I worked with Ally Carter in the Planning Department to put together a proposal to the BAR Foundation, the foundation that's helping with the whole BRT project, to add this public art component, visibility kind of component. In thinking about how to have this project have a more significant benefit for Arlington, we came up with a plan to commission a couple of more permanent artworks along the Mass Ave Corridor that would coordinate with the bus shelters, and as it were, sort of spill out of the bus shelter and give people who are riding the bus the sense of movement, like, ah, there was this pattern on the bus shelter, now here it is again on a utility box, or a connection between what they just saw in the bus shelter with a mural. So the two pieces that we, we've been going through quite an elaborate review with the MBTA about the artwork on the bus shelters, to make sure that it's safe, that the drivers can see through the shelter, that people waiting in the shelter have a sense of security because they can see out, people on the street can see in. So that's all been reviewed with the MBTA. But tonight, we wanted to make sure that it's okay with you to do one utility box, to do a painted treatment, which would be in keeping with the other utility boxes that APA has managed around town, and to do a mural on the Fox Library on the small wall that's kind of catty-corner to the street. And that has been pretty thoroughly reviewed, both by Andrea Nicolay and the library trustees. And we have come up with a plan that that mural can be changed in a year if the library decides that they want to refresh the wall, to change the message, and we've developed a whole process where the public will be more integrated into developing the Commission. In this case, all the artists are really trying to work with the BRT themes of kind of speed, movement, environmental sustainability, community. So that's, that's the story. I'm sticking with it.
Move approval?
Second.
Any further questions, Kevin?
So the bus shelters, what, what kind of paint is used on that?
So two of the bus shelters will be a, an adhesive film that's been digitally printed that is used for this kind of application all the time. One of the bus shelters is using a sort of paint marker that, actually, I chased down, Whole Foods uses it for its temporary displays on its windows, and it comes off very easily. And the fourth one is Benjamin Moore paint, but the artist, that's Johnny Lappom, who painted that whole wonderful service station with the polka dots, it's the same, he wants to use the same paint, so there's a coordination of palettes. He's tested it, it scrapes off with a razor blade, he's confident he can return the bus shelter right back to its original condition.
That's great, thank you.
Diane?
Thank you for doing this. I'm really excited by, you know, when you first came up, I'm like, they're not going to do all that. And you did, and then some, and you've continued on. I apologize if I missed this, or if this is not part of the proposal in October, but I saw something here which I thought was really interesting, that I think it was from Snehah Shrasphah?
Mm-hmm.
With the, giving the, yeah, is that part of this?
Yes.
Oh, it is, okay, I missed that part.
That's part of this, and the idea of that is it's a bit participatory. She's, she's put about 30 street names on her bus shelter artwork, and those names were actually suggested by Ally at the Planning Department as streets that have high density of housing. So it'll be an interesting experiment to see what people dot, you know, it could be their own house, a friend's house, a place they work. And hopefully, by the end of a month, we'll have like a whole array of dots that indicate the connection between the bus shelter and the bus service and other parts of town.
And I think it would be great for, if you see 16 dots on Egerton Road, you might say, are any of my Egerton Road homies here I haven't met?
Well, there you go.
No, but I mean, really, when you say.
That's true.
It's amazing how, because I've found, found in this day and age, unless it's an outreach like this, or it's an action, like a flood or something, a lot of people will be like, you know, I've been living next door to these people for seven, eight years, and I met them through either flooding or microbursts came through, and I think this is a better way that's, I know I would do that, I'd say, hey, but anyways, thank you.
Yeah, and just to give you an example of how we've had to think out every detail, those dots will not be stickers. They will not end up all over town, stuck onto things, they're going to be static cling like the old color forms.
I saw that, I love that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further questions or comment? On a motion by Diane, seconded by Joe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approval, thank you very much.
Can I just make a quick plug?
Yeah.
So this Saturday is when we'll be unveiling and celebrating Bike Way Haiku from 11 to 3:00 at the Uncle Sam Plaza in Arlington Center, and there will be music to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Bike Way at Trader Joe's, Spy Pond Park, and of course, the Aeronaut Brewery Beer Garden. So hope people will come out, bike the Bike Way, enjoy some music, see the poetry.
And what URL can they learn more?
BikeWayHaiku.org.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Sharon. Take it easy.
All right, next up, Tree Committee Matters. First up, Tree Preservation Bylaw Fees. Mr. Heim, or Mrs., or Ms. Stamps?
Mr. Chairman, don't I be happy to introduce the matter and then turn it over to Ms. Stamps?
Excellent. Excellent.
Before the Select Board are three proposals from the Tree Committee that Ms. Stamps can present in detail. One hearkens back to a town meeting action at our most recent annual town meeting to set our tree mitigation fees to the actual cost of planting and maintaining trees. The other two are policies that they're asking the Select Board to adopt with respect to planning around tree plantings and then maintaining them with a watering plan. Obviously, Susan's equipped to go into more detail about it.
Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. On the first issue of setting the, what the town will charge a developer under the tree bylaw, if they remove a tree in the setback, it used to be $50 per inch of width, or DBH. And the town meeting in the spring followed the selectmen's advice, which was to increase it to 375, well, which was to, what the town meeting voted was to allow the selectmen to set the fee because the fee is a moving target depending on what the market is to, for labor to replace the tree, for the cost of trees, the cost to take care of the trees for a couple of years and that sort of thing. So, it's definitely, it was clear back then that it was way more than $50 per inch, and by back then, I mean at the time of the 2018 town meeting. And the selectmen in their report said that they had done a detailed review with, I believe, the tree warden, the superintendent of Public Works, Town Council, and the town manager, and they had come up with an actual cost of $375 per inch of width. So, as, and they wanted to say that in their report, if I can say, because they wanted to make sure people weren't going to be surprised, that this is what they were thinking of, and so it would be an open process. And I don't know if that's what the selectmen would still like to. The bylaw amendment allowing the selectmen to set the DBH from the $50 per inch, which appears in the bylaw, that the, that warrant article has been approved by the Attorney General's Office, and so now it's just up to the selectmen to choose the number, and I would recommend, the Tree Committee would recommend, that the selectmen choose the 375 per inch of DBH, as they said in their report to town meeting. And perhaps you'd like to talk about that, and then I can get to the other two motions, which are completely unrelated.
Yeah, let's do the first one first.
Move approval, the recommended tree preservation bylaw fees as stated in the communication from the town manager via the Tree Committee.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Mahon, second by Mr. Kirill. And just to remind everybody, DBH is diameter at breast height, so it's the, how big is the tree, you know, at here, is what the measurement is.
If I may, I just wanted to add one thing, which is that this is not the only way that one can satisfy the tree preservation bylaw. They can plant trees instead of the mitigation fee, but again, the point of this is that if someone's going to donate, pay money so that the town can plant a certain number of trees, we want to make sure that we're accurately capturing the cost.
Yep, thank you. Any further questions or comment? Motion by Mr. Mahon, second by Mr. Kirill, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Ms. Stamps, hang on just a second. Mr. Leone, I just happen to notice, if you're here for the second, like, we're actually not covering it tonight. Yes, it is not, it does not satisfy the requirements for an emergency agenda item, and I apologize for not having said that earlier, but I just kind of looked out and I said, I think they're probably here for a reason they don't actually need to, and I apologize for not being clear about that before.
That's no problem.
Yep. I apologize for the interruption. Go ahead, Susan.
Of course, thank you. The other two matters that the Tree Committee asked the selectmen to consider tonight, we appreciate, we appreciate being able to be here, is, the first one is, now that we have a tree warden, which we've had for a couple of years now, and he's a great guy and a true tree expert, so we have, the town has its own tree expert now. And so, the Tree Committee is asking that the selectmen adopt a policy whereby any boards or committees, and I believe you have the language there in front of you, any boards or committees under the jurisdiction of the town manager or the Board of Selectmen, whenever one of those departments or committees is planning a project in town which involves trees in any way, whether it's planting trees or it's removing trees, that entity involve the tree warden in the process, in the planning process from the very beginning. It doesn't mean that it's going to suddenly take up all the tree warden's time, it won't, but just that they have eyes on the plan, they have a voice in the discussion because this person is our own tree expert, it's not the contractor's expert or anybody else's expert, and we feel that it's in the best interest of the town. I think there have been some instances where things have happened with trees in the past that townspeople have questioned or have been problematic, or people don't really know, and I think it would be good for the town to know that our own tree expert is, knows what's going on with all of the projects in town. So, that's the first one. And as, there are also, of course, several departments, like, for example, Parks and Rec, which are not under jurisdiction of the selectmen or the town manager, they have their own, they have their own power under state law, as does, I think, the Conservation Commission and some other commissions, and we only, and this motion only asks that the selectmen would like these, they can't make them follow this directive, but they would like them to also include the tree warden. They do, in, we suggest that that is the best practice for the town, for all the boards and committees. So, that's the first motion, and then the...
Let's, yeah, let's have a conversation about this one. Mr. Heim, did you want to weigh in first, or no?
I will say that I was able to confer with Mr. Lequeeve, our tree warden, and get a sort of general perspective from the manager reporting what the department's experience has been. And there are certainly instances where tree management for different projects was maybe planned for, but the tree warden can only address projects that he's sort of aware of. So, to the extent that he's not sort of included in the process, there are some mistakes that might be avoided. To Ms. Stamps' point with respect to bodies that are sort of under the selectmen or not under the selectmen, I just clarified that it's, there are bodies that may be under the selectmen but derive some sort of independent authority from state law, and obviously, as Ms. Stamps is saying, this would not abridge their authorities under state law, require them to do something that they wouldn't either otherwise have to do. It's more of a way of making sure that the tree warden is looped in to the extent possible on town projects that involve tree management.
I'd like to move approval, the town policy to consult with the tree warden on all town projects involving trees, again, recognizing this is what we would like to have happen, and I would leave it to town manager, acting town manager, and the Tree Committee. If it's under any of your purview, the other entities cited that fall under us, don't fall under us, quasi-fall under us, maybe something could be sent to them, you know, something just very brief, saying, this is the board's policy as a goal, we'd like you to be apprised of it, so move approval, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kirill. Further comments? I'll say that I read it, and the reason I'm happy to support it, partly because I think it does have, like, I like the intent and it has a relatively light touch, like, it's not actually, I don't think, it leaves it in the, it leaves a lot to good judgment, and I think that, and I think that that's the right way for us to look at this, so I'm happy to support it.
Agreed.
All right, so we've got any further discussion? Motion by Mr. Mahon, second by Mr. Kirill, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Number three.
Okay, number three. This is actually my favorite. This is about watering. Trees are babies and they need watering, and Arlington is no different from the town, any other town or the state, in planting trees with the best of intentions, and then there's not enough watering and the trees die. Now, we have a pretty good record, but it does happen, and sometimes the town doesn't have any control over it, particularly because it's a capital project and it's kind of left up to the contractors putting the trees in or whatever, so the Tree Committee is asking that there be a formal town policy that whenever there's a capital project that is funded with town money, whatever department does it, whether it's the school department, Park and Rec, whatever, if it's using town money, if it's a capital project, that there be, in the contract, a, that any new trees planted pursuant to the contract be warranted for two years or more, more is good, and to have a watering plan in the contract which is sufficient to maintain their health and growth of the baby trees for at least two years following planting. Pursuant to, and I think this is very important, a publicly available watering plan approved by the tree warden. So, it's got a few elements, any capital project in the contract, there has to be, the trees are warranted for two years, there has to be a watering plan for two years, and the watering plan has to be publicly available. To me, that means on the town website, so that any, anybody who sees a dead tree in a project that where they were just planted can go on the website and see what the watering plan was, and then we can, and then the contractors or whoever can be held accountable. So, that's the proposal.
Anything from, oh, sorry. Attorney Heim from our tree warden, our town manager, because this one, I have a little more questions on, but I'm just going to do that and then let the chair recommend.
Excuse, may I just add something? This is not talking about tree planting by the town in the normal course of the spring and fall tree plantings it does. This is about capital projects for which there are contracts, not, not planting done by the town.
Got that.
Doug? So, I don't think, I'll necessarily have anything to add unless the members have questions.
Okay.
I think Mr. Herbert was before.
So, I think you answered my question.
Okay, yes.
Who is it that is warranting the tree? So, it's not, so it's like the contractor that's hired to...
Yes.
To put the tree in, and they're the ones that also would implement the watering plan?
Yes, it's all in the contract, has nothing to do with the town. Town doesn't have to do any extra watering or anything.
So, we're not talking...
Well, unless, unless there's some compensation to the town, I'm not going to get into that, but...
So, it's not a watering plan that involves the DPW or...
Correct.
Okay.
Diane?
I see the town manager and the acting town manager have gone through the second one, which is a little more detailed, which I agree with everything with the spirit of it, and I'm assuming that, again, we're voting this policy as a goal, but as the town manager points out, there's probably two, three, four more steps in terms of how contracts are written up, in terms of any financial penalty or something else, and that's basically in a frame, am I encapsulating that, saying that correctly?
So, what I would say, Mr. Mahon, is that there are going to be some logistical things that would have to be worked out, and I think that there's certainly an aspirational element to the policy in the sense that when we're talking about, you know, a contract, you need to, A, have the provision in there, B, have the resources to enforce those provisions, and C, have some latitude. I would imagine that there are some folks who do this type of work, who are used to providing some kind of warranty for trees, and I'm sure that others, we would be including them, and that might be an element of negotiation in price. There might be certain circumstances where part of the watering plan might be for the town to provide some watering, whereas the contractor would provide other watering. I mean, there's a lot of different things that could happen depending on, I think, if you, one example of what we're talking is probably the Gibbs School is probably one of the arenas in which this came up, where as part of the project, a lot of trees were planted, but there wasn't really a clear expectation as to who is going to take care of these, and so a lot of the trees died, and then they got replanted, and then they died again, because they weren't, not only because they weren't watered well, but also they weren't planted at the proper depth. So, it is going to be a little bit complicated, and I don't know that we can guarantee steadfast in every single capital project, this is going to look identical, but we're going to have to, if the board adopts this policy, draft a contract provision that will try to make sure it gets into every contract that would be appropriate for it, and then, you know, I do negotiate from time to time. Most of the time, we have an RFP, if we can get it in there, it's part of the way it's supposed to be bid, so there technically can't deviate that far from it, but it does present some complications. It's not going to be the easiest thing in the world for us to execute across the board.
So, we'll see that sort of framework of a document in the future, and if I could get everything tonight, which I can't, personally, I think our highest offenders are DCR projects, DOT projects, fiasco in East Arlington when DOT came in. If there could be maybe a next step out in terms of, once this is all drawn up and formulated and put down as a framework or matrix, whatever you want to call it, that we very seriously get that to our legislative delegation, whether it's through the town manager and the Tree Committee or whomever, that this isn't the policy we have, but our highest offenders aren't necessarily the town of Arlington, it's DCR projects, DOT projects, they're basically sticking stuff out there and it dies, or they're not putting in the correct flora, I'm not going to say the right word, so that's not before us tonight, but, and we need to, you know, kind of patrol and police ourselves in terms of our town projects, as you've cited the Gibbs, but after this goes through, I don't know if it's when we have the legislators come into a meeting, whether the Tree Committee and the town manager somehow, but we'd like to communicate to them so they can possibly set up the framework to say to DCR, DOT, or any other state agency that's coming in, this is the town of Arlington's policy. We strongly expect you to include that, and number two, send us what is, whether it's included or not, send us what it is you are or are not doing, because, you know, I know if I was a state senator or state rep, to me, that's something you can, as long as you're on top of it, to say, come on, this is short change, you're going to do it, but anyway, so, but that's not before us tonight, but to me, that would be one step out, so I would move approval of the, oh, my goodness, policy, town policy requiring at least two year watering plan for new town trees in all town projects.
Second.
Kevin?
So, I support this, but I'm curious, what is a watering plan? So, you know, the island at Old Mystic Mystic, I've taken care of for a few years now, and lug water across the street. So, to me, like a drip hose or a sprinkler system, would we allow these people to tie into town water pipes and stuff, or what's a watering plan? I will bring a bucket of water each week, or...
Could be, the contract would say that select person, Kevin Greeley, would bring a bucket of water and...
Some would.
No, it's really, it could say anything. A watering plan is just, that's just the, seems to be the phrase that people use to describe, how are you going to take care of these trees after they're planted? It could be that they're going to come by once a week between June and September and water them.
You'd want it spelled out.
But I think you, you know, we could put you in the contract, too. Yes.
Doug? So, I don't know if, so one, so there's a couple of concrete things that typically happen with respect to watering plans, I think Susan mentioned this, as did the tree warden. Oftentimes, it's those gator bags that you see, they can help retain a certain gallon amount of water, and they're dispersed slowly over, you know, a week's time. Other times, where there's more ready access, it may be that we have somebody who's contracted to come out to the Gibbs School where there's, you know, hoses and things like that, and there's more availability to directly water them. So, you can see that there are some logistical things that will have to be worked out here. It is also possible in theory that somebody could contract with folks in the neighborhood to say, hey, you know, please provide, you know, this watering, and they'll provide them some kind, but it'd be difficult for the town to directly do that. We'd be trying to incentivize contractors to be creative with how they can meet this obligation.
There are also vehicles that do it, like, they drive around and water trees, and so hypothetically, I imagine you could, as part of your deals, you could contract a two-year deal with somebody to drive around once a week and or however frequently, I think you could do it that way, too.
And if I, if I can say something, the plan could be, I, the contractor, am not willing to take responsibility... willing to take responsibility for it, or if I, if I do, it's going to cost X thousands of dollars to the town, so the town decides, okay, it'll take the responsibility. But at least we know what the plan is, so the, the trees don't get just lost in the middle and nobody waters them and they die, so.
I just have one more question.
Yep.
So, if the tree dies, what happens? Is there a fine associated with this?
Well, the, also, Ms. Mahan, I assume that you do mean the, the watering motion in front of you, which also talks about the trees being warranted for two years.
I was going to say the two-year warranty, yes.
Yes, so it's the watering as the warranty.
Or more, if we can get more, but it's definitely two years.
Yeah, so there's a warranty for two years.
Okay.
Hopefully in the motion.
Sorry.
Yep.
Is the two-year, is that an industry standard for trees for a warranty, or is that the, after two years, if they can survive two years, they'll likely survive?
Yes, that's what I, that's what our understanding is from the tree warden, that one year is good, two years is better, and if they're doing okay after two years, they're probably going to be okay. Three is, is optimum, but that's asking a lot.
And is it written that if, so if a tree dies after a year and a half, and they come in and put a new one, it's another two years?
Well-
So, two years per tree?
That's a good question.
Because-
I don't know.
That depends on how, it's similar to the disaster, if I may, Mr. Chairman, down in East Arlington, they did come back out and plant it, and I'm not sure if the clock ticked back in. The way that I read the spirit of this language is, you know, it's a tree, it's two years, if it fails after a season, and a new tree goes in, the clock starts ticking back over again. So, if that's implicit in here, but not detailed, I think what Mr. Hird is suggesting, if we can tighten that up, that it's, you know, two-year warranty per tree, not per tree event.
It just strikes me, if we don't have warranted compounds, that we'll have a lot of dead trees after two and a half years.
I think that the financial incentive of those replacements is pretty high, like, it is, yeah.
Thank you.
But you could probably add some language, like including any replacement tree or something in-
Joe?
I mean, I'm wondering if, if we're not covering it already, though, because it already says such that all new trees shall be contracted to be warranted for two years, so presumably, a tree dies, you put in a new tree.
It's true.
It's new.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
All right, I just want to check in, I don't see Michael Quinn, Joseph Mowen. Hello, welcome. So, let's go back and revisit number six, the recreational marijuana facilities and marijuana, medical marijuana treatment centers. Welcome, congratulations, we already appointed you.
Excellent. Thank you.
But if you could, tell us a little bit about what your, brings you to this committee and what your thoughts are.
Okay, so, so I, so I've been a member of the zoning board of appeals, and currently a member, and I, I've been a practicing attorney for the last seven years, and six of which, I've been representing marijuana companies in Massachusetts and New York, and so, so I'm happy to volunteer my services for the study group.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions? All right, all set, we actually, we already took the votes, you're good.
Excellent.
Good to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now I think the only one, Mr. Quinn isn't here, right? Nope, okay. All right, then let's come back. For approval, candidacy for Metropolitan Planning Organization seat. Imagine my surprise to find my name on this ballot. Doug? So, the town would like the select board to consider renewing its status as a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. What we're asking for tonight is a vote to accept a nomination, just to be on the safe side, to nominate ourselves, to continue to serve as one of the at-large towns representing the greater Boston area in the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The way the select board already knows it works, but just for the folks in the audience, the chair is the formal nominee, but typically, our planning director Jenny Rate and our senior, our new senior transportation planner would be sort of our representatives at most of these MPO meetings for the purposes of all of our duties and responsibilities here. And so, and the only other piece that I'd ask of the select board is, there is sort of an statement of our candidacy, and if the board is comfortable with it, I'd also ask the board to just endorse it. It's not strictly necessary, but ask really, A, for your vote to approve of the select board's nomination to serve as an at-large seat on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and B, to endorse the statement of our candidacy. There's a fairly detailed election process that I'm sure everybody here is familiar with, and people can read about if they want, but given how many folks here are waiting for another agenda item, I'll leave that out of the discussion unless you have questions. Kevin?
Yeah, I, I move we approve and endorse and require the chairman to make our meeting. I mean, no, I don't mean that part of it. I, I move approve and endorse.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All right, second, moved by Mr. Greeley, second by Mr. Kuro, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and I did see Mr. Quinn come in, so let us go back and revisit item number five, the council on aging. Welcome, come on up to the microphone, please. We actually already voted you in, but we appreciate you coming in to say hello and telling us about why, that you've served on many committees, including my first in Arlington.
Power company feasibility committee, yes.
Exactly, Mr. Quinn was the chair. If you could share a little bit about why you're looking for this committee?
Sure, I, I think it's an important committee in town, I think that, that our seniors need as much looking out for and as much, as many people we could do something for. It's something that I would like to help with, I've been learning more about it. I've been doing taxes during tax season over at the senior center, and I got to see more of the senior center in action. I'm really impressed with the organization, and I want to help it to continue to succeed.
Any questions?
I think you, you missed my little, my little speech on, on the nominees that, that we approved along with you. We had representation from the legal field, the health field, some linguistic skills, so with your economic background, I think we have a full package here to serve our seniors, so thank you for stepping forward.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for volunteering. Okay. Next up, Janet Road Private Way Repair. So, I asked to put this on the agenda, not because I think that there's, I don't think that there's anything that we actually need to do, but I certainly have received a fair amount of correspondence about it, and I'm sure my colleagues have also received some correspondence about it. And so, we've got an update from, I think it was Fran in our office who prepared this, and so we've got, when you have a private way in town, and it is time to, and the residents want to do repair work on it, there, it's possible for them to just totally organize it by themselves and just do it themselves, because, you know, it's theirs and their responsibility, but we also have the betterment process where the town, they can solicit some help from the town, and the help will help a little bit with some logistics, and we also help by, if you get to two-thirds of the town, of the abutters supporting and agreeing to pay, then we essentially, as a board of selectmen, can, you know, take a vote and, and enforce the rest of, everybody on the town to pay, or, excuse me, on that street to pay. We are not yet at that step, and we've got, like, you know, where we are, and the ballots are being mailed, and we're waiting for the ballots to come back, and so on and so forth. But, so I just wanted to share that update and see if any members of the board had any comments or questions, and if there was anyone on Janet that wanted to, you know, had a question or concern about the way it's moving. So, first up, anyone on the board? Yes?
Through email, text, mail, and voice, I'm not sure what applies to the chairman, but I have been communicating with the chairman and the town manager and Carrie, I'm blanking on her last name, I know there were several things outlined in there, and it, it seems, you know, a large part of the process is actually getting through and completing the process, recognizing the time clock is clicking, ticking in terms of, A, being able to get everything, all your ducks in a row, in terms of following all the postings and neighbor notifications and ballots, as well as, B, procuring a company that is available and will be able to do the work, and that seems to be sort of a number, another stumbling block, but until we get to the end of the process, but in terms of the select board, besides the select board through town manager or inspectional services, we can provide a list of contractors that are available, they don't have to use that if they find someone else, but we really can't dictate you have to take this and you need to get it done. But there were some, some requests that I thought maybe the town could, especially in light of the most recent storm, I know there was requests for some cones and some other, you know, town apparatus that we could place, is, am I recalling that correctly? And I'm wondering if that part, which is small, but is something we can do in the short term?
I believe that the, that the cone was in process, and the other thing I'll say is, is that I'll definitely be, is that they do, they already have a contractor, and they have the quote, and so, like, and so that's what enabled them to, or that our office to actually send out the ballots, is that they made it that far. I haven't heard or confirmed that the cone actually came in, so, I'm sitting next to Tucker, should, all right, come on up. You're, you live on Janet?
No, I do not.
Oh, no.
My name's Steve Moore, I live on Piedmont Street.
Okay.
Having gone through the process of organizing my street for this very activity many years ago, I have always an interest in private ways, and I would ask this question, the town, as you well know, and as everyone in town knows, has a challenge with its private ways, and over years has been evolving its approach and the townway bylaw, I believe. My question is this, not specific to Janet, however, specific to private ways, is it, within the town's ability to force the repair of a private way?
Over the objection of, like, all of the members, you mean?
Yes, for instance, let's say, one or two abutters are interested in getting the private way fixed, and 12 or 20 abutters are, are not, and I know there's a private way law, and I'm familiar with how the town's developed, and I know this continues to be an issue, it's becoming more of an issue, and particularly in some private ways in terms of the status of the repair of those ways, or quality.
So, I, I'll, let's see if we can get a relatively quick answer now, but I don't want to spend too long on things that are-
No, understand, that's all I'm asking for.
Is there a short answer to that, Doug, or no? The answer is, forcing them to pay for it? Probably not. The select board may have, as well as certain abutters, may have the right to institute some kind of formal legal action, to say that the road is going to be discontinued, particularly for abutters, to say that my access is being blocked by the communal response, the failure to come up with a communal response efficiently. So, there's probably some relief, some of which might fall on, unfortunately, on the residents of that way to pursue, and in the most extreme situations, it may be possible that the select board could say that we're essentially, or, I'm sorry, I apologize, the current board of survey could potentially say that we're essentially closing this road because it's no longer passable, but I'd have to put a lot of research into that.
Understand, no, thank you, I just wanted that general information, and I didn't expect to speak this evening, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, and I just want to say, I've had this ongoing conversation with the current town manager and previous town manager on the end of Gardner Street, which is by Arizona Terrace. That way is a nightmare. The people that have to go through there, and including the residents, that business owner just refuses to, and he hasn't done anything on that street for at least 10 years, and 10 years ago, it was a nightmare. So, I asked the previous town manager, and I also asked Mr. Chapdellane, is there anything, you know, you can say, oh, you're closing a road, excuse me, but I would like to explore if there's anything the select board, through the town manager, especially, I'm, I get, I laser focus on Arizona Terrace, the end of Gardner Street, to say, you're not maintaining this road, unless it's an emergency, emergency vehicles, you're gonna, you could possibly suffer, some town services not being provided because you're just letting this road, I mean, it's literally huge craters, if you ever go all the way down Gardner Street to go out to Mystic Grove Parkway. So, I have had that ongoing conversation, and I've gotten from the previous and current town manager the yes/no answer. Well, yes, we could do that, no, we've never done it, so I'd like to, just especially for that one, thank you.
Okay. On Janet, is there anyone here from Janet Road who wants to talk about the update?
Yeah, Darrell's saying, yes, she wants to talk.
All right.
That's kind of like your Abbott and Costello thing you did, you know?
So, we actually, we need somebody to be at the microphone, to, yeah, and please introduce
yourself or who you're asking for, or something.
Sorry, I'm Laurie Farin, and I'm asking for 42 Lansdowne. Was the survey done on those properties to show the abutters exactly where this pavement was going in relationship to their property?
I-
And other plans available to them?
So, the coordination is, so, like, there's a, the email I've been getting is from a woman named Carrie, who I can look it up.
I'm Carrie.
You're Carrie, okay. So, Carrie, can you share, tell us, tell us what, what plans are available and how they've been shared?
So, basically, up until this point, we had to get a, I think what she's asking specifically about the assessment of the land, we had to get that from the assessor's office.
I'm sorry, okay, so.
Plotland, survey it out.
So, are you asking just in how the, your plot of, how your plot of land abuts Janet Road?
No, I'm asking-
Okay, sorry, I don't understand.
... Road, in relationship to 42.
Oh, that is not something that I have, but what we were given was a general layout of the road, where all the properties.
All right, hang on just, hang on, hang on just a second, Doug, do you have an insight into what this is about? Yeah, just, just so I can try to help in this situation, so, I, I don't know that every private way would be surveyed, being surveyed costs a substantial amount of money, especially if you're talking about multiple properties. That would be something that you'd have to talk to the contractor about, who is going to resurface the roadway, was it as part of their contract? It's not necessarily something that's, that's required every time, from our perspective, we're providing a resource to help you essentially finance the construction of a private way, and there are certainly details that we get involved in, but it's not necessary that you would be surveying. Okay, Carrie, why don't you have a seat a second? Could you come on up, back up to the mic, and just tell us, like, what exactly is the root of what you're trying to, is there, what's the root of the concern?
The root of the concern is when the private way was initially placed in relationship to those abutters.
Okay, and saying it was-
For property. Mm-hmm.
Could you be more specific? I, I don't understand what the, so-
Are you concerned about the amount of, that each house individually is being asked? Are you concerned about the amount that-
Carrie, Carrie, I'm sorry, I can't, well, I can't conduct the conversation out in the audience, so I need, I need the questions to come to me and through me, and then whoever's talking, I need to, to have at the, at the microphone.
The question is, the property that is being used for that private way.
Yeah.
Which is not actually a private way that belongs to 42 and others.
Okay, so I guess then, so, we're at a level of, we don't have any of those, like, I don't have any of those facts or any, like, what that is. I, what I can tell you is that I, we've got like a, like, let me pull up this contract, where it's, you know, excavate and dispose of existing roadway and add the gravel, need to fine grade, so on and so forth, and it's at, like, and it's like a certain, like, house numbers on Janet Way, or, sorry, Janet Road, excuse me. So, I, I don't think, I, I think I'd need, yeah, Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I, I live near this location, I think I know what you're, you're asking, and maybe you can confirm if I'm understanding correctly, that, that the, the one home on Lansdowne Road abuts the private way, and is that home, but doesn't have-
A couple of them.
What's that?
There's a few of them, actually.
There are a few of them that abut, abut the private way, but do not have access from the private way itself, so are they liable for, for sharing in the costs? Is that the question?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, yeah, one at a time, sorry. Okay.
So, they back up, Lansdowne Road backs up to Janet Road, so I think that, that's what you're asking?
Right.
Whether or not the homes on Lansdowne Road-
The payment that exists there is-
Are liable for, for, for sharing in the costs, even though they front Lansdowne, but a but Janet, is that what you're asking?
Well, you have to go back into previous plans of what was done, and what was given as, in honest, okay, property was taken. as an honest, okay, property was taken for the private way some time ago that actually belongs. So the road that's being dug up is not actually private road property. It's in the wrong spot. There was a cul-de-sac that was proposed years ago.
Okay. Joe?
I'll take one last crack at trying to clarify. Is the question, does the road actually line up with...
Yeah, with the property, but it's on our property.
With the private way.
But it's on our property.
I mean, I've dealt with this in a previous life where if you look at that, the plan, and then you look at an overview of a road, not every road, private way exactly matches up with the plan, the original plan of the private way. And I think that, and I don't think probably any of them do, and my understanding is it just the right to pass over, if it's, if your property extends into the area that's a private way, the public's right to pass over that portion of your property, just like you could drive over the street, you could pass over that portion of the property.
Doug? So here's my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, in light of what Mr. Hurd is saying and some of the disputes about evidence. While my office cannot litigate a position on behalf of a private party, myself and my paralegal, Mr. Buckley, do frequently review these types of plans, be happy to obviously take a look at the original road layouts as approved by the Board of Survey. I do want to let folks know that it does happen from time to time, it's rare, it does happen that the Board of Survey approved a private way that was partially the typical type of private way, that, you know, essentially there's a shared common ownership, which is not very clear, but that did go over private tracts of land. So that does, that has happened in the past. But I think rather than try to sort of guess at it right now, I'd be happy to take a look. I'll give both of you my card and you can send me the information and be happy to take a look.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify, do you two know how to get ahold of each other?
No.
Can I suggest that that's also a really good thing because obviously from up here, without having, you know, had the question laid out before us in terms of like looking at a map and understanding, we're in no position to be able to help out. And so if you guys can also talk directly, that'll help.
Sure. I did want to clarify because I think there might be some confusion about it. There is one house that is, if you go all the way up Janet Road, there's a driveway that then continues up the road and there is a house at the top of the street. And that family is not here this evening, but it is their property, I think that is the most impacted by the backside abutting of their house on Lansdowne and where their property is. So there is definitely some confusion about sort of where the road ends and their driveway begins and who owns that stretch of property. But it is all part of the road. It really would, it would make the road, it would make the family up there trapped if you were to cut off the road that's the entryway to their house.
All right. So I guess in general, I think we should look forward to seeing a more detailed plan, but also recognizing that there are limits to what either the Board of Survey, which is what we act as, and the Board of, Select Board and Town Council, because this is all private property, there are limits to what decisions we can and cannot help with. You're good? So the things that we're, that we're good at is working, you know, within the betterment law, or bylaw, to assist with the collecting of the money and stuff like that. And so we'll try to do that. But I definitely encourage you all to work, because it is all private property, you guys need to talk to each other and figure out how that, how that works. You look like you have a question about that.
Yeah, I was just concerned.
Come on up to the mic.
The ballots are due this week.
Sorry?
I was concerned that the ballots are due this week.
Yeah.
Because it's not just one property that's not happening.
The ballots are, the ballots are due this week. Yeah.
All right.
All right.
And could I just say, I think the chairman suggested the best resource is perhaps you two women speaking to each other, basically saying, just give me the survey of what house to what house, what street to what street, the number that is going to be included in this betterment, and give us, if you want to double check the information that you get, if they say this is what your house is or is not, you can always contact, definitely use Attorney Heim, but definitely if you want to contact Engineering Department down at Grove Street, Inspeccional Services, and just say, you know, I'm not questioning veracity or anything like that, but, you know, here's me and am I in this survey? I kind of think that's probably some of the, what you were getting at. Thank you.
All right. So we have, I think if appropriate, I'd like to hear a motion for receipt.
Move receipt.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Greeley. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, National Grid Moratorium. So to recap about where we are, we had at our last meeting, at least two property owners in town who described what their, how they felt they were being impacted by the moratorium. And I don't think as a board, we did not achieve complete consensus, but we got close enough to consensus that we asked the town manager and the, and the Inspeccional Services to come back with some, whether or not they could accommodate a change in the moratorium safely. And so Town Council Heim has prepared for us the moratorium relief parameters. And just, and one thing that I don't think came through because necessarily, but I just want to be, definitely I followed up and it is quite clear to me, is that in terms of the determinations about who is meeting these criteria or not, we're leaving it with the town manager and Inspeccional Services. So we're not setting ourselves up for a hearing on each one of these. We're leaving it with the professional administrative government. And so the things, so I hit on safety, I hit on adjust a moratorium. Oh, and that, and we as a board directed, in particular, we were looking for hardship cases and talking about what the criteria of what that hardship and the timing of it was. So I think that's putting, and I think what I want to do next is have Attorney Heim go through the qualifications and criteria and then open it up to discussion. People comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I've tried to capture here was, first of all, the feedback from this board as you were discussing it at the last meeting, and then information garnered from the town manager, the Director of Inspeccional Services and the staff at Public Works. The qualifications and criteria are meant to try to give assurance that this principally is proceeding in a way that would be safe, but also keeping this to a pretty narrow band of potential folks who would be eligible for relief. So the first qualification criteria, if you will, is that Inspeccional Services can verify that qualified operators are going to be performing the work. That's the most important thing from the select board's perspective, of course, the safety being the number one reason why the moratorium has been put in place in the first place. The second criteria is to ensure that this, any relief would be limited to work that was essentially reasonably underway or in the queue on the date of the moratorium. So those folks who couldn't be fairly, you know, who could fairly be, say, were caught by, surprised by this. And there is affording a little flexibility to the Inspeccional Service Division here because it's a context-specific type of thing. For example, we have one individual who is concerned about trying to get a cut and cap permit, and there wouldn't be necessarily the same amount of documentary evidence on a cut and cap as there might be on a project that's essentially housing, housing that's basically at or near completion. The next criteria would essentially be that there will be no permits whatsoever, either additional permits or for brand-new projects or anything else after the seasonal closing. So typically that happens between November 15th and December 31st, depending on weather conditions. The next would be that, and this is a little bit nuanced, would be that the relief should be reasonably related so that we'd only be granting potential relief to projects which are not only reasonably underway, but were not stalled or delayed for reasons unrelated to the moratorium. In other words, if somebody's been sitting on a project for a year just because of financing issues, they're not going to be eligible for any relief because the moratorium is not what's caused the disruption. Then finally, we'd ask that they be able to demonstrate some substantial harm, either to health and safety or to livelihood, by further delays in permit issuance, which is essentially in part a way of justifying the use of town resources to provide appropriate scrutiny to make sure that, that this work can be done safely. And then lastly, there's some conditions on approval. I'd like the board to make it necessary that there's a modest release holding the town of Arlington harmless from any damages that could arise from issuance of the permit. I'd like everyone to understand that if they are eligible for relief, the grant of a permit is not a guarantee that National Grid will in fact perform the work, that all approvals are subject to the town having sufficient resources to verify the credentials and certifications for the purposes of the aforementioned safety, and that all permits provided during the moratorium under this relief measure would be listed and made available for public inspection. That'd take any questions from the board?
Mrs. Mahon?
Be concise. I would like to, if I could, beef this up a little bit more, just because of, we're not just, you know, I understand people coming in, you know, two business owners and a resident, but it's not just them that I'm worried about. I'm worried about, especially for the developers that don't have anything in that unit. And I know when I first spoke with my colleagues on the moratorium, it truly was a public safety concern. And I know a lot of people, I saw some kind of eye rolling and like that, well, there's no, you know, gases, they don't have any problems. Yes, we do. And as a matter of fact, the company that the individual resident said Feeny Brothers would do the work, as we all saw in the news and news media, it is Feeny Brothers Contractors through Columbia Gas that are cooperating fully with the NTSB and other officials. And that's why I said I wouldn't take, yes, Feeny Brothers has been used on National Grid, but it's mostly, I call it dead pipe. It's mostly just to lay the pipe. But in terms of putting in, you know, you take a high-pressure pipe valve line and if you're a rookie like me and you don't know, you have to match it up and not put a low-pressure pipe valve line, which is then going to surcharge the system. And what I'm concerned about here is, you know, people are saying, well, I need it, I need this, but I'm also thinking of, I mean, I know we have a disclaimer in there that nobody can sue the town of Arlington or anything like that, but to me, it truly is a public safety issue. So, and I've had residents call me and text message me, so I'd like to beef this up a little bit more. One of the things is, and the governor is well aware of this and I'm told is taking steps, right now we have three on the books, DPU inspector commissioners, but one predating this has been out on long-term leave and continues, nothing untoward. So you only have two here for the state. The governor announced that he was hiring three to five immediately and then hopefully three to five more in the future. I would like to say, because I'm just concerned about the town of Arlington, that also included in here, which is what should have happened on this Columbia gas fiasco with Feeny Brothers and others, that the DPU inspector has to be there. Unless the, there's, the town manager says there's adequate, it's not the kind of work that the DPU inspector needs to be there. But I'm told in terms of tying into and putting in a new service in a gas line, especially since in my personal opinion, we do not have qualified credentialed workers out there doing this work. The second thing is, which, so I'd like that to be included in there and also that, which National Grid has not been following, that they need to notify through the town manager or the police department in terms of, for certain connections, especially connecting in a new service, the police department is supposed to be on site. And maybe they, you know, can take some of the burden off of Inspeccional Services and they can also be there to say, I want to see credentials, are you really here from the DPU? And then the other thing is, I want to make it abundantly clear that when any of this work is done, and I'm not even sure that I'm in favor of this in light of current events, I'd like to just, not, emergency work only, National Grid is instructed, they need to send their subcontracted employees, that replacement workers, in National Grid trucks and equipment and make sure they're properly, that they have the proper equipment to do the work they're doing that. The reason I say that is, and anyone can go on my Facebook page, I had all these neighbors from Ariel Street or Ariel Road, sending me pictures and sending concerns. National Grid sent out two of their replacement workers in their own personal vehicles and neighbors, and they were basically venting holes up in Ariel Street and further up. And when the neighbors went to them and said, what are you doing? You know, who are you? Because they showed up in their personal vehicles and they had the little thing around them and they're venting holes. And they said, well, National Grid told us to come out here and vent these holes so this number two leak doesn't progress up to a number one. To me, that's very dangerous. I mean, that kind of work should not be done by, I mean, they should have at least a National Grid equipment truck there so that if they do hit something and they say, we're going to get a valve pressure line reading or we're going to get something else, they don't have that equipment in their car. I don't think they should be allowed to do that. And a lot of the residents are very concerned about that because I'm getting, just from the town of Arlington, all these reports of workers coming out, you know, there was somebody up on Hillsdale or Hillside, you know, two workers from New York that basically, I won't go into the experience, but, so I'm concerned, so I'd like to get that sort of beefed up in there in terms of when it is necessary that a DPU inspector commissioner should be there, that he or she has to be there. And that's determined by, you know, the town manager and Inspeccional Services, but certainly when you're installing a new line of gas and you're cutting into that, you know, I was in a different craft. And I don't know how, I don't think we do it in this, but if somehow we could relay to the town manager, and I'll be happy to forward our names and addresses of people and I'll do it with my colleagues also, I didn't ask their permission, but like I said, if you go on my Facebook, you see it, that we can somehow, just for, when you come into the town of Arlington, whether you're National Grid, I don't think we have anyone else in here, I don't think we have any Eversource, that there's certain standards, especially in this work lockout, which is not a strike, it's, you know, that you can't just send people in from New York or Vermont in their personal vehicles. They have to come the way they normally come. Because I'm very concerned hearing about all this. I'm not trying to, you know, go, oh, you know, the sky's falling in, but I had this concern from day one, knowing, you know, not every replacement worker is not qualified, but in my personal opinion, I've been out to a lot of the sites, I'm certainly not a steelworker or gas worker, a lot of them, you know, I would question, so. And then the other thing like I'm saying is, we're not just granting relief to this individual, we're also, like, when we see all the abutters notified, sometimes it's just, sometimes a property owner is the only abuter, he or she has to notify, and sometimes it's, you know, four, five, six houses. I know for gosh darn sure, if you went to anybody right now that said in light of current events, you totally comfortable with, you know, what's going to come out and install that new service, maybe you wouldn't get unanimous, but you'd get more than a majority because people have said that to me. So I would ask if my colleagues, if we could include the DPU inspector part when necessary, maybe as adjunct to that, not contained in here, but ask the town manager to address those complaints of replacement workers coming out the way they are, that, you know, there has to be a certain, you know, send out the equipment and the manpower that you did before. But I have, I have great reservations granting any non-emergency permits because it's not just for the people before us, it's everybody around that. And I know people could say, it'll never happen, oh, it'll happen once, it'll never happen again. The problem is, you look in Andover, North Andover and Lawrence, that's 21,000 miles of pipeline that needs to be addressed. That's just those three communities. I think what we need to do, and this would be through our legislative delegation and also what the governor needs to do, kind of like what we do in terms of visioning forward, you know, we're going for green and we're going for a bicycling community, so you look and you plan for that, and then you also make sure you have the ancillary pots that you need in terms of staff. I think what needs to be done, and the federal government has come in and outlined some very serious detriments and things, you know, they basically predicted this would happen and some people kind of knew but didn't. I think from the governor on down, I'm not running and I'm not plugging anybody, needs to look at and say, you know what, we're at a different time here in Massachusetts, we have all these gas companies, all their systems are aging out, they're all very susceptible and vulnerable, we need to maybe have a different plan to attack that. You know, maybe we don't need to... You know, maybe we don't need to, we can't get by with just two, maybe we need 30 or 40. But that's something on the governor level. But what I'd like to do here in the town of Arlington, and I'd like to hear from my colleagues, because I'm just very concerned for non-emergency work. And if something goes awry, and especially since, you know, National Grid is using Feeny Brothers and others, I'm just not comfortable thinking of the other neighbors, so...
Thank you.
Businesses.
Kevin. So I'm going to move approval on what we have in front of us as written. And Diane wants to make amendments or whatever, that's fine. But to be honest, Diane, I think it is crazy for us to say a DPU inspector, which you told us there aren't many of them. We might as well say none of this work can get done. I have confidence in this first paragraph. Non-emergency permits will not be issued unless and until the Department of Inspection Services can verify that necessary and appropriate licenses and certifications for such work are held by each of those persons performing installations, connections, inspections, or other project services. So I have confidence in the people where we're putting these decisions in. I think we're talking less than a dozen cases, maybe in total, I don't know that. And I for sure want nothing done that isn't done safely. I don't know what to say about what trucks they're coming in, I'm just not expert enough to talk about that. But I move approval on this.
I'll second your motion.
Second by Mr. Kuro.
Can we have language in there that says, oh, sorry?
I'm going to keep going. Other, I'm going to first round before, but then I'll be happy to come back. Either of you want to first crack?
No, I think that we're on, I mean, let's be clear about a few things that have been out there. I think that this board, it deserves reiteration. I don't think that we're trying to impact the outcome of negotiations, but I think we all recognize the disruption that's been caused by this lockout. I drive by the Winter Street in Waltham every day, so I see the locked-out workers are there every day. But I think we also recognize that the disruption has also been visited on our, some of our local residents and on their workers as well. It's a horns of a dilemma, horns of a dilemma. I think that it is reasonable for us to consider grandfathering, which is in essence what we're doing, as long as we have some reasonable assurance of safety. You know, appreciative to all of the work that town staff and others did to craft this. I suspect Ms. Mahon will probably offer some amendments. I do agree that if we required the DPU inspector to be out here, that grandfathering would be effectively meaningless. Putting some discretion in the hands of inspectional services, fine. Ensuring that an authorized work order from National Grid is there, that makes sense as well. But I will be supporting this. If amendments are brought forth, I'll consider them on a one-by-one basis. I would just add, lastly, that I would encourage folks, parenthetically, to join Mothers Out Front on October 27th and 28th, where there will be an effort to tag gas leaks in the town again, and it's estimated there are over 200 that are already here. And I think it's important that we keep that issue alive through this and throughout...
I'll just say briefly, because we talked about this ad nauseam in the last meeting, that, you know, this moratorium has always been about safety. This board has put safety first, and we're not going to do anything, make any action that is going to put our residents at risk. This new amended, I guess, moratorium falls in line with what I think was the original intent when we had talked, when we've done the moratorium in July, and we had talked about open permits. And I think this just more clarifies what we had intended, that anyone that had work going before can proceed with their work, not to the detriment of themselves or families, or it avoids hardships. But it's still, we now have a process in place. I trust the town manager, I trust the building department to be able to have the sufficient expertise to make sure that whatever work is being done can be done appropriately. The amendments proposed, I think they sound great. I just don't have, I echo what my colleagues have said. I don't have the expertise to know what sort of staffing DPU has to bring an inspector out on-site to every single, all the work that gets done. So I'd be a little reluctant to require that, not knowing if it, maybe they have enough, and maybe they could have a DPU inspector for all the work, but we don't know that. So as I echo what has been said, I don't want to vote the amendment and then make it not worth the paper it's printed on.
Well, I guess I can convince my colleagues that I actually am knowledgeable in this area. All I'm asking for is that there be language in there, because National Grid and Columbia Gas are ignoring it, that under state, federal, and NSTB guidelines, where it is stated in state, federal law, and/or NSTB laws, that a DP, for a certain gas connection service, emergency, non-emergency, they have guidelines, and we have state laws, not federal, federal's through NSTB recommendations. We have state laws that say when a DPU inspector is supposed to be out there. National Grid and Columbia Gas are totally ignoring that. I'm asking that the town manager and inspectional services would be able to tell them this, or the engineering division, they would look at a project and say, "You know what? This is a new service, this is going to be a charge or surcharge to the line. There really should be a DPU inspector there." And I'm just saying, can we just put some language in there that says whatever the current state law is in NSTB guidelines, which are basically one and the same, that, I'm not saying any of this work, but I certainly think some of this non-emergency work, that if it falls under state law in the guidelines, and it says someone, the DPU inspector should be there, then that's what we should ask. And then maybe we say, "Well, you know what? You only have two, Arlington wants one of them." And maybe that spurs other people on to, "We need to hire more." I'm just asking for the safety that's afforded under state law and the NSTB guidelines, that if it had been followed, in my opinion, and up with the Columbia Gas, I don't think we would have seen what we've seen. So I'm just asking, can we just state in here, whatever it says for our state laws regarding when a DPU commissioner needs to be there, if this is that sort of work, then that has to happen.
I'm trying to come up on the fly with some language that I might be able to suggest.
Well, may I say something?
Oh, sorry, yes, please.
So if the state law requires it, then I have absolutely no objection. That's status quo. And if there's some language that we want stated in there, but to additionally require it now is what I think would be wrong. But if the state law requires it, that exists, that should continue.
And it's always existed. But what I'm saying is, if that language is in there, somebody through the town manager is going to say, "Okay, I'm the person, the professional, that can identify if this emergency or non-emergency work requires a DPU inspector." What National Grid is doing right now in Columbia Gas is they're ignoring NSTB guidelines and the state laws. So the reason I want some language in there is that when everybody sits down, they're going to say, "Okay, who's taking that part of it? Who checks off that box?"
I had a language suggestion, but maybe you have a better...
Let me give mine a try. So under the first one, non-emergency, all of the language that Kevin already read to us, "Non-emergency permits will not be issued unless and until can verify necessary appropriate licenses of each person performing installation, connection, and other services," and tacking a sentence onto the end. Furthermore, that such work be performed under state law, particularly in regards to DPU inspection.
Mine was slightly more succinct. I just added on a clause at the end of, end of the bullet point and said, "And that all, that all work is performed in accordance with all applicable laws."
Okay.
With applicable law.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion? Or, actually, it's up to you if you want to make this in the form of a motion.
Yeah, I move that as...
As an amendment.
So what would the full?
So, "Non-emergency permits will not be issued unless and until the Department of Special Services can verify the necessary and appropriate licenses and certifications such work are held by each of those persons performing installations, connections, inspections, and other project services, and that all work is performed in accordance with applicable law."
But what I'm saying is, I want some language, verbiage, specific to the most overlooked and most concerned with state, safety, that says something about, when applicable, under state law and/or NSTB guidelines, which are one and the same, that the DPU inspector needs to be on-site. Basically say that that's a provision, a given. Because what I'm saying is, you know, something happens, and that people are going to come in here and say, "Oh, yeah, you guys were real great. You want to be great with the unions, you vote for this moratorium." This is what National Grid is doing now, when businesses and residents come before them. They're trying to find a way around the moratorium, which means this board, by kind of watering this down, is now taking the side of management. And to me, it was never, for me, a union or a management thing, it's a safety thing. And if this, you know, if they try to wait out over the winter, and they come back again in the spring, I'm just going to say, "No", you know, if they haven't resolved this, because this is just a tactic. They're going to every city and town doing this to try to get it watered down. My problem is, yes, it's in state law, it's in NSTB guidelines. If your project exists, then someone from the DPU needs to be there, but it's being ignored. So I want some kind of, and if you all don't want to do it, that's fine. Because I don't want to keep everyone here all night, and I have a cold coming too. But it's being overlooked. And it's great to say, "Oh, that's state law", but I want language in there, verbiage, specific to that, so people say, "Oh, that's something we have to check." Because I don't think everybody sits down and reads the state guidelines for public safety and NSTB guidelines, you know. And my problem is, that's, could have prevented what happened with Columbia Gas. But if nobody wants to put DPU language in there, then that's fine. I'm just saying, you know, everybody knows what the law is, but if it's not being followed, then you know what? We need an extra kicker in there, and some phraseology that, then if I get a complaint, or anyone gets a complaint, or the town manager, we can say, "Yeah, it said state law, but I didn't realize you meant state law regarding this." I want the necessary safety piece that they're overlooking, everybody, not just National Grid and Columbia Gas, of not having a DPU inspector out there when state law and NSTB guidelines dictate it. So I'd like to somehow get the DPU...
Did my language satisfy that?
I think so.
Okay, I'll move Mr. Dunn's language.
Can you just repeat your language, Mr. Dunn? Yeah, so tacking a sentence onto the end of the first bullet. Furthermore, that such work be performed under state law, particularly in regards to DPU inspection.
Thank you. I know I'm getting silly on this, but I really...
Okay, so I have a motion by, from Mr. Kuro. Was there a second?
No, I'll accept it. I made the motion to accept this, and I accept the amendment, so it can all be one vote.
So that solved that problem. Okay, so now we've got a motion.
So I'm fine with that amendment. And I readily acknowledge that you are a much more expert on this subject than me. Before, when we were talking about it, I didn't know it was state law, now I do. And of course, I think it's good language to be in there. So this is going to be a condition of the permit, right? That says it, so hypothetically, even before, while they're getting the permits, they're supposed to have it out there anyways. So are we going to have someone there overseeing the work from the town, making sure that they comply with that condition?
Doug, do you want to answer?
Because I guess what the question is, if, we're saying, it's already state law, so they're already required to have it. If we put it in our moratorium, then we say, "All right, you know, you get the permit, but you have to make sure the DPU is there." If they're ignoring it, then even if it's in our more, our language, they could still just ignore it. So how are we going to enforce that?
I'm going to defer to the acting town manager to answer that question, I think.
So I'm confident that inspectional services feels that they can go out. And, you know, one of the things inspectional services does right now, whether all the utilities like it or not, is they go out and they frequently say, "We'd like to see your permits, licenses, to make sure that things are being done in accordance with state law," and including, which is not necessarily just what's happening with respect to our local bylaws. So I'm confident that inspectional services feels, you know, equipped. And if folks don't want to cooperate with inspectional services, I think that'll be very telling and damning with respect to National Grid. We're, you know, I think, trying to accommodate a very specific problem of some residents and tradesmen. And we can only do our part if National Grid won't cooperate. I think that inspectional services will be prepared to respond accordingly.
Is there further discussion?
And I'll just say, if we're in this position in the spring, it'll be completely different. And I don't think it's going to be that hard. It's just going to be, right now, there's two inspectors. When inspectional service says, "Yes, this is a job", they don't even necessarily have to be there. They can say to the detail officer, "Just make sure you see the credentials, and make sure," whether it's Inspector Dunn or Inspector Hurd, those are the only two names. I mean, it's not, but my thing is, and I thank my colleagues, and I thank Mr. Grayley for accepting that amendment, just stating the DPU part, I think, gives the town manager, inspectional services, you know, one more thing to click off. And they can say, "Hey, the board, not only are we following state law, but they want an extra step to specifically cite this step, because you haven't been following it." So thank you.
Mr. Grayley?
Which, I just want to, I accept it because I believe our inspectional services have always followed the state law and are well aware of the state law. And if this, any of these conditions require a DPU inspector, they will require that, and they will, or else the work cannot be done. So I think we are supporting the union with the overall moratorium. I think we have to work with management of National Grid. And I think first and foremost, we have to take care of citizens and businesses within Arlington that have very reasonable requests for, at least, and I'm nowhere near as knowledgeable as you are, Diane, but of things that have been done hundreds of times throughout the town of Arlington, in my opinion. These are just, it's a timing situation, but anyhow.
Like, less than, but whatever, okay. I'm not saying anything against inspectional services, Mr. Chairman. What I'm saying is, all these steps that we have in place, National Grid hasn't been doing that, so we're kind of beefing that up. So this is not any questioning inspectional services or anything like that. But I don't expect one department and one craft to know everything that's encompassed. And now that we have all the pieces stated in there. And I'm going to do my best with my colleagues to do whatever I can to kind of convince you, as I accept from my colleagues, when you state facts and your knowledge in your particular field, I can't tell you how many times, I totally yield to you on all things Minutemen and things like that. But because I don't have that knowledge, it's a matter of respect for one of my colleagues that I know he, 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 or he, because there's no she's. To me, it's a decorum of respect. And I guess I would ask the same. And I thank you tonight.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, five-zero vote. Next on the agenda, we have correspondence received, requesting fee parking in metered spots after 6:00 PM from the Addams Family in Newport Street.
Move receive.
Motion received and second. So I would just, I did have an editorial comment on that particular piece of correspondence, because I think that the authors were, feel like the parking is, meters are there for the town revenue purposes. But I would actually want them to know that the meters are there because we're trying to relieve congestion on the parking. And by putting meters there, we are encouraging more circulation, which is really good for the businesses there.
Are the authors here?
Are the authors here? I don't think so.
Just to follow up on that, not to get into it with too much detail, but I was on the PIGC, and we talked about this. And the reason we chose eight specifically was because some of the heaviest times were six to eight at night with people in Broadway Plaza. So we put the meters there for that. That is when people can't find parking spaces. So the eight o'clock was a very belabored time to put the meters into.
And in the lot, it's at 50 cents an hour. On Mass Ave, it's a dollar. So, I mean, we're doing what we can to encourage people to, you know, get off of Mass Ave and into those lots and stuff, but anyhow. So move receive.
Yeah, we got a motion on it a second already. I just, I belabored the point. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next up, new business, Mrs. Krupelka. Did we have a celebration last week?
Oh, Town Day, I was going to say, except for I was saying that we had, I think, a successful Town Day by all accounts, um, and, uh, we will have a follow-up meeting, and you've probably all got geriatrications with, um, 16th, and then I was going to say, we're going to have a meeting, um, we're going to have, we're going to have a meeting on, um, regarding the voting, early voting starts October 22nd through November 2nd, and I will give you more details as I get them from the state. They're talking about maybe having a Saturday, but not mandating it, so we have to discuss that, and I don't want any of you leave until you have to sign a report for the warrant to be opened.
I would love to have, uh, Saturday voting, I think that'd be great.
Could I ask the chairman on that? Just because last year when we had early voting, we kind of just flew by the seat of our pants, and a majority, if not all of the work, I'm not going to say fell to the select board staff, basically, they picked it up because it had to get done, and I think maybe because it was something that was brand-new. If, if the chairman with the board administrator, I don't know if there's a need for a meeting, if there's a need for conversations, an email chain, that we basically look at everything and make sure every town department, I don't think it's just the select board, uh, staff, um, that we need and under state law should be doing this, I think it's at least one, if not a few others. So I'm just leaving that with you, and I know.
I will do so.
I've had longer conversations with you, I just want to fine-tune that so we're not band-aiding it. And we did great last time, not saying anything negative.
I'll do so. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Mr. Hyatt.
I have one matter of interest for the board. Mass Bot had a meeting with a number of, uh, town stakeholders, including the Spy Pond, representatives of the Spy Pond, uh, committee, the conservation agent, myself, and a number of other folks, about, um, mitigating the Spy Pond sandbar that has developed from fill from Route 2 over the years. Uh, it's been something that residents of Spy Pond have been concerned about for a long time, and, um, is some very encouraging, uh, signs that they're committed to rectifying the situation, although it'll require quite a bit of work, probably a couple of years to get all the logistics planned.
Thank you, good news. Mr. Greeley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have, um, two items, uh, you know, um, we just, uh, talked about our administrator from, um, the great job she and the staff did on Town Day, uh, and, uh, on elections, and, uh, she's very special, and so much so that the Arlington Rotary Club has named her as their unsung hero. Uh, it's a new award, and there's a dinner that Marie will be, um, honored at, along with other rotary clubs that have nominated unsung heroes, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Marie.
Thank you, you know how I feel about that. Thank you, I just.
And I'm going to go to that dinner, but I'm going to sing to the hero that day. She'll no longer be unsung. Uh, the other one is, I'd, I'd also like to thank, you know, I did mention earlier, um, since my brother's passing, he originally took over that island at Old Mystic and Mystic Street, and, um, I took that over, but always with the help of Jimmy Nicholson and Robert La La Carter and Jack Lepore, and I want to encourage people to drive by that island going up Old Mystic Street, and they are going to see a new bench that has been put in there, and I mean, it is a park bench, it is with, uh, cement footings, it's a cement bed, uh, bench with wooden, wooden slacks, but that's because of the efforts and, uh, the generosity of Jack Lepore. So I just wanted to, um, send out a, uh, thank you to Jack for that. Thank you, sir, thank you.
Mrs. Mahon.
I'm chalked out, new, new business.
Mr. Hurd.
Our new business.
Mr. Kuro.
Our new business.
I don't have anything either.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, next meeting October 10.